I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Next I have is the approval of last week's agenda, or two weeks ago, excuse me. Or this agenda, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now approval of minutes from two weeks ago.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from meeting two weeks ago.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment as submitted.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is a 2017 weed resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the weed resolution for 2017. Normally this is done earlier in the year, but it's a little late this year.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2017 weed resolution. Any discussion? Yeah, we didn't have a weed commission over there for a very good time. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is the appointment to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Don Orgel to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Thanks, Don, for wanting to do that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is Farming Home Publisher, Julie.
Hi. Good morning, everybody. I'm doing the annual flat books. I have a copy of what we can actually put in the courthouse. Should they decide, should you decide to put it in the courthouse for resale, anyone who orders it could go online and use an additional county at no cost. The way we determine the cost is about, is the number of pages. And this particular county has 72 pages. The maps are colored.
What do you mean that this particular, did you say an extra county?
Yes. Actually, they could look at the inside. There would be a login and password for anyone who orders it to go online and use another county at no cost. Should you decide to go with this, if you ordered 100 books, they'd be $22 each. And they would be yours. We don't put them on inside with another colored copy.
So if we bought 100 books, you charge us $22 apiece and then we resell them?
Exactly. And that would be the total cost. There wouldn't be any shipping or...
Okay.
If you wanted less, you could go with 50 to 100 for $24 each, or 15 to 49 for $29 each. Give anyone else like this.
Michael, what is it that we charge for, for the ones you produce?
That's Cheryl's question. $21.
Twenty-one. And they're updated how many times throughout the year?
Usually if it's really a lot twice a year. We've expanded it, so you don't have to... When Megan and I were both here, I think they did a couple of... Ours would be updated every year, as long as there's a colored book in the box. These also go out to the county, to everybody that lives in the country.
So they already get one?
Everyone in the country does get one, yes. So what I want to do, either way you go, is put a ad or a page in the book, so that the county people, we've had a lot of people say, "I wish we had the courthouse information." These books are used a lot by country people because they can get so much more information for their agricultural businesses through this way.
Well, you come to us every year, we always have the same question. We sell our own.
Well, we pay $2. I think we've got our pricing. Also, we've got the additional information that you don't have in your own. We list everybody that lives in the country in the front section. We show their names, their 911 house number, their township, their section number, and so forth. So this is used for a lot of different things. We've been in business for so many years and, you know, I think Farming Home is the largest publisher of flat books in the country. It is an Iowa-based company out of Belmont. And we've been in business for a long time. I don't know if you have heard of County Bank.
Well, I think if the rural people already receive this from you, they're usually the ones that would come in to purchase. So, I mean, they come in and buy our books. So if they're already receiving it, I guess I don't, I don't know that we would sell that many. I think we had both books in the recorder's office a time or two.
And it just seems silly to have our own hand somebody else's.
Welcome.
The challenge I have is we make them here and we sell our own. And then you want us to purchase yours and then turn around and sell yours.
Well, you've got...
How many do we sell it here?
Well, you've got a lot of costs involved with time span, security, and so forth.
Well, we have our time, we have all that figured into the price that we charge, so we sell them for 21. I don't know. I guess my recommendation would be we stay with our own.
I'm comfortable with that. I know Lori's not here today. Cheryl's here on her behalf and so, you know, if Lori would like to proceed, you know, in the future, to go ahead and, you know, make that recommendation in the future. But I hadn't heard anything from Lori as to move in that direction, so I'm comfortable where we're at today.
You had another question for us as well.
I would like to, if I can, put a page in the book that goes out to the country, well, in our record book, with all of the courthouse information as far as phone numbers for the assessor's office. I think we did a page there in the front. Is there a problem with that?
There's no financial cost to us.
No cost to you?
I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
So who, I talked to you to get that handled?
The board.
Oh, one of you guys would sign the order for me?
We would have to approve the order first.
Okay.
And I would say you would need to talk to each individual elected official to find out what number they want listed.
I can do that.
We can have that put on for next week's agenda.
Yeah, if you want to make up the order, we can approve that next week.
Okay, I'll make it up and leave it with you.
That's fine.
I'll let it one, make it up, go back.
Great.
It's a long ways for me.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You bet.
Thank you.
Enjoy the colored books.
Thank you.
I am past my 10:10 deadline, so I will go to item number nine, which is the public hearing on the animal feeding operation construction permit, Bart Halverson cites section 29 of Providence Township. Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak? Yep?
Just like to introduce myself. I'm Bart Halverson, and I'm the one looking to expand my current operation from a two barn site to a three barns that become stuff in Providence.
Did you say this was public hearing time?
Yes.
I might have a little trouble. Not to speak, that's all right.
Yep.
You can speak if you can step closer to the microphone. Right here. That helps you not be some kind of soft voice from the nose. The camera, just so you guys know, this is recorded, there's a camera over here. Okay. My name is Brenda Bray. I'm actually from Storri County and live close to Huxley. And as we know, some of you, I think supervisors would kind of have, were coming to our Iowa River Forum this past Sunday. Rivers don't know boundaries. Air doesn't know boundaries. And so, as a mother and a person who's concerned my whole life with health and education, I used to be a whole night teacher. I used to be a dietitian, retired from that. And most of my career as a dietitian was helping elderly and educating people. So that's why I'm here today. Now, I have a, my youngest son actually had a couple of different times where he had asthma attacks. I remember, I'll never forget, one time he was probably six or seven, and he needed breathing treatments every two hours at night. So at this time, you know, if you can all think to yourself, when's the last time you really thought about the importance of being able to take a deep breath? Taking a deep breath is very important. So with that, I'd like to share some things, because again, my whole thing is education and health. Education and health. So I went to a recent conference on Saturday, and what they talked about was the rate of asthma in Iowa schoolchildren who lived in rural areas. Iowa schoolchildren in rural areas, the average rate of asthma is approximately 6.7 percent. Okay, now consider that if there's a rural school, there's a lot of rural areas in Storri and Harding County and this whole state, we're a state of rural communities. If there's a rural school within 10 miles of a CAFO, the asthma rate almost doubles. It almost doubles to 11.7 percent. But if there's a school within a half mile, half mile of a CAFO, the asthma rate is almost four times the average rate, almost 25 percent. Think about that deep breath again. These are our children that we're talking about in this study. These are two studies that this is combining. Now, if there's a child that lives on a farm where antibiotics are used in the feed for the hogs, there's a 55.8 percent chance that they will have asthma. That's nine times the average rate in the state. So why is this? Well, we know there's wastewater slash sewage produced, always, in a CAFO. And there are many airborne poisonous things, toxins like hydrogen sulfide, methane, ammonia, particulates, antibiotic-resistant organisms. So the rest of the story, and the reason I'm here today, is that I'm encouraging Hardin County Board of Supervisors to join other counties in signing a resolution about the master matrix and strengthening it, because the evidence is clear that the health of our communities depends on looking at the evidence and the data that we already have to keep our communities safe. And there is evidence that that 15-year-old master matrix needs updating. So there's a legal petition right now the DNR has in its hands to strengthen it. And I would encourage the Hardin County Board of Supervisors to sign on to that. I have an example of a letter here, and I have those statistics here to bring copies up to. And I appreciate the time to present this. Education and health is very valuable. Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments?
Oh, go ahead.
I live out in Fort Hager Pine Lake. I prepared something. Hopefully I can stick with it. Concerned, concern, to use carefully or sparingly, avoiding loss, waste, and damage, protect from harm or destruction, balance, to make thoughtful decisions concerning change. I have a page two of the manure management plan in that for supervisors. And if you refer to table four, line two of the manure management plan, the optimum crop yield is 197 bushels per acre. This is obtained from a chart in the instructions labeled five-year average yield for Hardin County plus 10 percent. The allowable amount of manure is based on the average plus 10 percent. This is like a snowball rolling downhill. Its size increases with every turn. The phosphorus ball keeps getting bigger and bigger, more corn, more money, so what's the problem? A prime example is algae impaired pine lake, primarily due to phosphorus, 86 percent contribution from field runoff, which includes manure application from concentrated animal feeding operations. Simply put, the lake is ingesting over two times the phosphorus than it can handle. Table four, line three of the manure management plan reports 63 pounds of phosphorus per acre will be removed by the crop harvest. Line eight indicates 105 pounds per acre are added with the manure application. This happens every year, and excess of 42 pounds of phosphorus will accumulate in the soil every year. The ball of phosphorus is getting bigger and bigger. Remember our prime example of impaired water in Hardin County? The lake is ingesting over two times the phosphorus it can handle, resulting in excessive algae growth, leaving the lake useless for its intended purpose. Canoeing the river among floating chunks of brown algae is not my idea for good time. How could overapplication of phosphorus be justified? It's called the phosphorus index calculation. This was developed over a decade ago. The National Resources Conservation Service, NRCS, explains why this was developed. They say, "When phosphorus is lost from fields, it can increase algae growth in surface waters. This results in neutrification or excessive algae growth. Neutrification is a main cause of impaired water quality. The index accounts for that. Whether it be an application error, the factors used in the formula, or an error in the formula itself, the water quality in Hardin County's rivers, lakes, and streams, by NRCS's own definition, are proof of positive. It is not working. The P-index calculation is out of its control range. This is like controlling the speed of your car with your foot four inches away from the gas pedal. It's just not working. The cattle industry is placing a spotlight on the phosphorus index. I don't think rocrop farmers would like that handle opened up." Remember our example of impaired water in Hardin County? The surface water is ingesting over two times the phosphorus it can handle, resulting in excessive algae growth, leaving the water useless for recreational purposes. The excess algae growth results in neutrification, depleting the dissolved oxygen, leaving behind a smelly slimy mess for your kids and grandkids to clean up. And finally, I'd like to look at table five, and this is a calculation application rate based on phosphorus. Now, this table says, "Fill out only if P-based rates are planned." And the table is filled out. The instructions for this are as follows. The phosphorus applied over the crop schedule shall be less than or equal to the phosphorus removed with the harvest during that crop schedule, as calculated in 65.1719B, unless the additional phosphorus is recommended by Soil Test and Iowa State University Extension Publication PM 1688. What it says is that if you're going to pick the P-based plan, the plan that puts manure on the ground based on phosphorus, it says you should not put more phosphorus on the ground than what the crop removes. Kind of makes sense. The manure application rate for P-based plan, line 11 on the chart, is larger than the manure application rate to supply B removal, line 10. So this brings up two questions. Are P rates based, excuse me, are P rates planned? In other words, is it going to be based on phosphorus? If not, why was table five filled out? If P rates are planned for this site, what in the IO Administrative Code 65 justifies applying more phosphorus than the crop removal rate? Are there supporting documents for this? I couldn't find them in the documents submitted from state. I'm curious why the application was not simply based on nitrogen. It's, that's the normal way of doing it. Perhaps filling out table five was just a matter of not paying attention to detail. Hardin County Board of Supervisors, this is to you guys, whether it be lack of documentation, an error, or a misunderstanding, I'd like you to take a second look at the entries in table five. Be convinced they are correct or have them corrected prior to moving forward on this site expansion. And Mr. Halverson, right? That consultant from Marshalltown, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, we've heard from the agriculture community about their concerns for water pollution. We have heard about being stewards of the land. We have heard the voluntary system is working. Hardin County lakes, rivers, and streams are having a tough time swallowing that big ball of phosphorus. I ask that you consider withdrawing your application for the expansion of your facility. Thank you.
Any other comments? Julie, you have one.
Oh, I just wondered what the score was then, the matrix score for this particular application. Out of 880, a 4.40 is the lowest score. What was the score then?
Don's got it.
Very close.
Any other comments? Are there any written comments? Hearing no more comments?
Lance, I've got the instructions for that page five if you'd like to talk about.
Good.
Do you want to know why table five is filled out?
Sure. Go ahead.
Well, table five is, has to do with the phosphorus removal. But I go ahead and fill that out, one, because that plan every year could change and move to the P-index of over two, which you'd have to do the phosphorus. So, and as I've filled out these manure plans before for customers, the DNR likes to see that line, what it would be. So when they look at their site inspections for manure records, they can just look at the numbers right there.
When you say the plan can change year to year, what do you mean?
Well, I update the plan every year based on manure samples taken before manure application takes place at home. So this is a plan as of now, and those buildings will be sampled again this year, in the next week, and then those, both numbers all get updated every year with every plan that I do.
When you say manure sample, you're taking a sample out of the pit?
Yes.
Okay. Not the sample of the ground?
What's that?
Not the sample of the ground, the sample of the pits?
Yeah, say below the ground, the pits.
Okay.
This might be a dumb question, but is the, is the manure usually applied based on the nitrogen rate or the phosphorus rate?
If it's, if the P-index is below two, it's based on the nitrogen. If it's above two, it'll be applied by the phosphorus. And these are below, I think they're one, one something, or they're based on nitrogen.
So, okay.
So you're saying it's based on nitrogen until the phosphorus levels get too high, and then you've got to base it off the phosphorus?
If the next soil sample and, and the tillage operations change that would show make the phosphorus go over two, then things are reserved back to a phosphorus-based plan.
Okay.
You know, as the manure changes, you know, nitrogen levels, if for some reason, you know, average is 58 pounds, 56, 58, you know, I do have buildings that are 85 and 90. So they can't apply as much.
Okay.
So it's based, every, every year, the rates change. So those rates don't stay the same.
Bob, did that answer your question on that?
It does, other than the form that was filled out is a B, a B revision. A non-lettered revision did not have the note, "Fill out only if P-based rates are planned." But filling out this is very confusing as to, as to what they're, they're basing their rates on. And even though it doesn't matter the amount that's put on, it's, it's the same, okay, in this case. But it is confusing as to, as to how they're, how they're doing it. There was a reason for this document to be updated. I don't know what that reason was. I wasn't in the meeting yet, and updated this document. But there was a reason for that. And I think it would be a simple thing to do is to take out these, these numbers in table five since the instructions very specifically say, "Fill out only if P-based rates are planned." And they're not, they're going to be based on nitrogen. So I would think that just to clean this up, I think...
If I didn't fill that out and send it in to the DNR, I would get it back to fill it out.
Then that's not my problem.
Right. So that's why it's filled out.
I think there's confusion around table five.
And also, say he would add another field next year, and that field would be 2.1. So it'd be a P-index plan. Well, this is, this is set up for four years, but you're adding a field, so you've got to change it. So then your rates are... So you're doing, you could be doing two plans, because your fields are going to change every year possibly.
Would you like to explain that? What do you mean, change fields?
Well, he might rent another field next year, and that field, time he did all the Russell twos, might have a P-index of 2.1. Well, then, this plan would still be in effect, so you would have...
So you would have, your rates already kind of set. But they might change because of the manure sample. But, but you could apply those rates that are listed on that plan for the next four years until that plan is updated. But we choose to update the manure rates every year to be, for the environment. And so we're not applying more phosphorus than what we actually need.
One of the reasons for changing the manure plans every year is, if you remember, they get to add 10% more manure than, than what's required by the crop and more P-index. And by updating that manure application with an over application of fertilizer, they get a higher crop yield. With a higher crop yield, they get a higher manure rate application. And this just keeps going on and on, and higher and higher. It feeds itself. So I, I don't have any comment. If, if there are changes in the amount of manure that they put on the ground, or the reason why they put on the ground, or if the manure sample's at a lower or a higher number, if they should put in another manure plan, they should file it. I think that's per.
They, they don't have to be filed, but you have to put them in your manure record keeping book. So when the DNR comes and does your site inspection, they can do that.
And are those available to the DNR?
No, they're available to the DNR.
Julie?
I just asked that you not recommend this for approval. Harden County already has too many capos, too many hogs because of the impaired waters in this county. Continually approving these and setting up these capos, it's unsustainable. Water quality in Harden County will never improve if these are continually allowed to be built. Thank you.
Is there any other public comments?
David, I have a question. If manure were not being applied and farmers are applying the regular fertilizer and chemicals and everything else they apply for crops, would they be applying the, those chemicals at the comparable rate that they use manure? Can you answer that?
They should be, but you know, I guess most of them is manure. So, but yeah, they mainly apply the commercial fertilizer based on the needs of the crop.
Which, which this is too, correct?
Yeah.
So you're going to get it?
One way or the other.
One way or the other.
And, and you know, when you look at manure versus fertilizer, we're probably, we're adding organic material to the soil to improve the soil health.
Instead of chemicals?
Yes.
With fewer hogs in this county, maybe we don't plant so much corn. And soy, which we could have diversification of crops that require less of the stuff.
But even past history, even before all the confinement operations, even before that, corn and beans were the major crop.
And that does not mean that they need to always be diversification and just improving. We have the knowledge to, to do this, to plant different crops. It's just a hard thing to do, but we need to do it in order to sustain our water quality. Farmers need to have more markets so they can sell different products. It's a big thing and it's not that simple, but we need, we need to move forward. Our water quality will not improve unless we move forward, think differently, innovate. And it has to be done.
Any other public comments?
Oh, can I add a question?
Yes.
I think I, first of all, row crop farmers, application phosphorus does not come under Iowa State University's, the COVID-19 pandemic, that is not the Iowa State University. There was a meeting between Iowa State University and the NRCS. And that meeting was about why are we applying phosphorus to ground at rates high, very high in phosphorus levels? The answer in the meeting was simply, "We don't know." And they did go through a number of possible reasons. One of them, hey, they're getting good crop yields by putting excess phosphorus on the ground. Why not just do it? So we know that the lakes and streams just can't do it. There, there are ways to apply manure on the ground without overapplying phosphorus. And that's by going to the P-based plan. Of course, you would have to supplement that manure with nitrogen in order to, nitrogen itself. Basically speaking, manure is not a balanced fertilizer, like a row crop farmer would. I don't know that it's.
Any other comments? Hearing no more comments, I can go ahead and close the public hearing. And now I'm going to move to item number 10, which is Recommendation on the Bart Halverson Site, Section 29 of Providence Township with some of the things that were said. Is anybody interested in checking on Table 5?
Mr. Halverson, would you be interested in reevaluating Table 5 and, and getting that, you know, since you, you're acknowledging you're using a nitrogen-based application method, would you like to revise that and bring it back?
I can.
I, I would, I would appreciate that and I think, yeah.
Do you want me to just send it? I'll just send it up here?
I'll get it up here.
I had to follow the process of, you know, the, the entire process. Don, what?
I don't know. Probably has to send it to the DNR, I would imagine.
Yeah.
I'll have to send, I'll send it here. I'll redo the whole thing based on that, send it to the county for the signature, and then I'll redo it to the DNR.
I appreciate that.
And I'll put an intention of Dan that we met yesterday.
Okay.
So at this time, we would look at tabling this until that is done?
Correct.
I can take a motion?
I'll make a motion to table until further data is provided by Mr. Halverson on the Bart Halverson Site, Section 29, Providence Township.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Is there any times or deadlines we have to have this done by?
No.
I don't know.
I will have it, your signature, here tomorrow.
For receipt.
Okay. Any other discussion?
But it wouldn't be able to be approved by the board until next week? Is that going to be?
That'll be fine. Then you can type the DNR, send it back to the DNR.
Okay, okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Were tabled. Now moving to item number 11, which is Acknowledge receipt of DNR determination Justin Finisher Site, Section 6 of Buckeye Township.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the DNR determination for Justin Finisher Site, Section 6, Buckeye Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is number 12, which is Acknowledge receipt of Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit, Buckeye Finisher Farm Site, Section 25 of Buckeye Township.
I will make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit, Buckeye Finisher Farm Site, Section 25 of Buckeye Township.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Julie? PJ, you had those numbers.
Um, one was a 5,000-head unit. Do you know what the other one was, Don?
I think the total is 5,000.
I think the total is 5,000.
The buildings will each hold about 2,500.
Yep.
And who was that?
You're a can.
And the hogs are owned by your.
Well, I was select.
Oh, okay.
No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now is set time and date for public hearing on Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit, Buckeye Finisher Farm Site, Section 25 of Buckeye Township. Suggested dates would be September 13th or the 20th. No later than the 20th.
Right. I'll make a motion to hold the public hearing for the Buckeye Finisher Farm Site, Section 25 Buckeye Township for Wednesday, September 13th, 2017, at 10:05 in the large conference room at the Harden County Courthouse.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now, I have is Action on Salaries and Job Study. We've been after this for a while. At any time, is anybody ready to approve the job study as it is? Or would we like to hold off on this study itself and do the indirect at the same time?
I'd like to see us get everybody to where they need to be in terms of what the study showed, where we were falling short. It's both something that needs to be done so we can recruit and retain, recruit new employees, which less is really in a bind right now. But we need to be able to retain the current people we have in all departments, not just those that were shown to be short. And so, and then look at, you know, going forward in a similar sense of what we'd done before in terms of annual raises based on expenses and revenue for the county. So I, after doing my homework, I wasn't comfortable with some of the anticipated bumps and jumps in the study. So, but I do believe that the study showed inadequacies in pay for the work that was being done in Harden County. So I'd like to make a motion to approve a 1% raise for all non-union and non-elected officials to be made retroactive to July 1st, 2017. Along with the raises, Harden County shall adjust the salaries acknowledged to be low, shown in the study, to be brought up to the salary suggested by the wage study while freezing the wages of the positions identified as being above the maximum. And that's my motion.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Also, in this process, it's going to take some work from our auditor's office, Kelly Collins specifically. So, you know, if this passes today, I really want to give Kelly the time and effort that it's going to take to get this adjusted. If it's something that can be done in, by the next pay period, great. If it takes a couple of pay periods for her to do it properly and get, you know, the, the numbers done correctly, you know, I want that done. But, you know, just the respect out of, you know, giving her the, the room to do those tasks to make sure it gets done right. I have full faith in Kelly, but people poking and prodding to get it done, you know, yesterday isn't, okay, we got to give her the time. And so I'm just asking that everybody understand that it's going to take more than a couple of days to get that put into place. So, but that's, those are my comments.
So with comments, so I understand this, right? You're doing a 1% raise and these suggested pay bumps to all these 12 positions would be bumped to them, to where they're at?
Correct.
Which is 7,900, 14,000, 8,900, 5,800, 5,100, 10,000, 7,000, 2,200, rough numbers. 3,100, 665, 936, and 1,830.
Correct.
If I'm on the right schedule.
Did you take into account what we discussed regarding the environmental health position and the health of that?
That is not taken, that is not taken in. It currently is proposing a, I believe it's 10,000, 10,192 to environmental health.
Is there a way to change that?
Do you want to, would you like to explain your logic?
We've been discussing with that position and because of the inexperience of the current environmental health specialists, we were already kind of on a, a plan to bring her salary up over a certain number of years because she is getting training for a position and walked in with no experience. We are proposing just a $2,000 raise this year. And we're, we're going to deal with it in each budget time. And our goal is to get to that minimum wage within, say, four to five years. And we've discussed it with the person in the position or supervisors, and then he is a supervisor. And so it's all three parties that agreed.
Okay.
And that's how we hired her. That the whole plan was always to bring her at the beginning salary and move her up at a set frame that was outside of how we traditionally have been doing pay increases in the county. And I would oppose that we continue to do that this year.
Which was a $2,000 increase, correct?
That's what we budgeted for this year.
Would we like to take these on a separate basis, do the 1%, except for excluding these 12 positions right now and then take these one at a time?
Sure.
And I would need amendment.
Right. So I'm going to withdraw my motion and we'll start this over. You want to hand me the sheets, the sheet and?
Make sure I'm on the right sheet, by the way.
Right. Okay. So what I think, I'd like to, so to make this clear, I'll make a motion to approve a 1% raise for all non-union and non-elected officials to be made retroactive to July 1st, 2017. And the position of the Director of Conservation will be adjusted $7,904. The Interpretive Park Ranger manager will be adjusted $14,081.61. The Natural Resources Manager position will be adjusted $8,985.60. The Operations Supervisor, $5,803.20. The Interpretive Park Ranger position, $5,137.60. The Environmental Health Specialist, $2,000. Interpretive Program Assistant, $7,072.00. Director of Veterans Affairs, $2,277.60. The Clerk with Specializing in Real Estate in the Auditor's Office, $3,099.20. The Office Manager at the County Engineers Office, $665.60. The Clerk in the Treasurer's Office, $936. And the Administrative Assistant in the Sheriff's Office, $1,830.40.
Okay, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? With all these increases, the excess amount that's coming out of the budget that was unbudgeted for, where are we getting that money from? We would have to amend it.
Right.
I have a question. When you said 1%, you don't mean 1% in addition to those. These are separate, what you said.
Correct. Right. Yes.
Michelle, did you have a question?
I just had a question on the people that are under, even though they're not under the guidelines that the study said, is there something in the plan for those people that are still under or were they off?
No. It's the 1%. Not at this time. That would be my opinion.
I have another question. Was the court that had the figures on it, not this one, but the one that you've been presented in the past, that there was a minimum and a maximum?
presented in the past, that there's a minimum and a maximum? Are those years of service? Is that, how do they move through those pay bands? Is that years?
That's part of the jobs.
Year one, year two, year three, year four?
I would say that's part of the job study that did not get implemented.
So we're not, so far we haven't approved the job study?
So we're not approving that chart or the policy that came with that?
Right.
We're just approving to get these people to these numbers?
Yes.
Get the other people with 1%? And we don't know what the plan is for next year is?
Correct.
What we're doing today?
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, my question is, by doing this, where's the money coming from to be able to do this? So you're looking at how many dollars there to increase along with the 1%. I think as it was proposed, it was moving people to pay bands and bringing these people up to the bottom of the pay band. So I don't have a dollar amount with this proposal, with the 1% and the additions.
I think with, I would imagine with some of these figures, that it's going to be in the people's budgets. I think it's going to be mainly conservation that there may be an issue.
What, amend?
My thought on that is, I guess if we need to amend, we'll have to amend. We also need to maybe look at conservation as far as places that they can maybe increase fees from here on out. That's, I mean, it's, there's just going to have to be further discussion on how this is going to be funded in the future. But obviously, these people have been underpaid for a number of years, and I think it's only fair to get them there, but I think it's probably going to take a budget amendment for.
And what are we amending from? Next year's carryover?
Probably.
Do we have the money?
I think, well, we've got a budgeted figure for an ending fund balance.
That's, I just want to be clear on that number, that if you do this, we have enough money. I know at one time we budgeted for, out of the general fund, to give Secondary Roads 100%, and I know it didn't get through correctly, so we have 100,000 sitting there. But is our intention still to give that 100,000 to Secondary Roads? Are we going to run out of money? That's what I'm asking.
No, we're not going to run out of money. No. We have that, we have more than, I mean, if we, if this were, if our ending fund balance were so tight that we wouldn't be able to fund this, we'd be in a world of hurt.
But we have been crunching it down tighter.
Well, we have, and some departments may have to crunch down tighter, or, like I said, raise fees in the future to be able to fund some of this. But at this point in time, no, it will have to come out of fund balance or out of reserves. And as far as I'm aware, this is the first time this has happened in the
To this volume.
Nearly 40 years I've been here, so it isn't like we do this every year. And, I mean, we have a budgeted amount for carryover to begin next year with, and
I understand that we have a budgeted amount for carryover, and we're taking out of that budgeted amount for carryover?
Correct.
To supplement here, is that going to leave us enough for next year? Is my question.
I feel confident that
Or should we try to phase in some of these numbers so it's not as large?
These people are the ones that have waited the longest or been underpaid the longest, and we're already losing some of them. I feel it's something that we need to do.
Yeah. I think our joint meeting with the Conservation Board, you know, Wes made it very clear along with the board members, that retaining the staff that we have right now is important, and, you know, we get what we pay for, and the knowledge base of the current staff is very good, and to lose another, to try to retrain them and get them acclimated to what Hardin County Conservation can offer, is going to take a lot more than just money to get them up and running, so.
And they were also accepting the fact to phase it in over time, period of time, too, as long as the employees knew what the plan was.
But I think in the discussions with them, they also understand that there's an issue of where's the money going to come from, even in future years. So I think as long as the Conservation Board also is aware of all of that, I think they're probably going to work and make whatever adjustments they can to, to see that this is funded. Because there isn't a tremendous cost, because, I mean, I've been there, but there's a tremendous cost in turning over employees, because when you have them, and they know what they're doing, and you lose them to somewhere else, you hire, they're, I don't want to say employees aren't worth something, but actually, they're, you know,
Their knowledge set has to be grown.
Yes.
I mean, Kristen learned.
Well, I'm not arguing.
So, so I just feel, if this isn't done, if the whole amount isn't done, I think we're going to lose additional employees. I mean, the Conservation Board may know that, or may have said that, but I don't know. Will the employees agree to that? I just feel it needs to just be done. My opinion.
Yep. And I think, you know, I hope that there's some honor and accountability and loyalty in that system, that by giving some of these, you know, larger sums of money, that people will, employees will understand that we went to bat for them, help us, you know. I'd hate for somebody to take, you know, a lump sum of money and then leave the next day, and that would be pretty hard for me to swallow to get, you know, have that happen.
They're not really going to get a lump sum. They're going to get their bi-weekly paycheck. Plus, some of these employees that are getting the largest raises are going to be exempt status, so they'll no longer get overtime. So it's not going to be like this is a total increase. They're going to be losing a lot of overtime dollars that they were
And doing the same job.
Before, and they're doing the same job. So they're still going to be putting in overtime, they're just not going to get paid for it.
And that's not our choice. That's our Fair Labor Standards Act thing.
Right. And they've budgeted for overtime, so part of that money is in budgets. It's not like we're going to be amending for these full amounts.
So it goes back to my question, do we have enough money?
Yes.
Yes.
Jessica, you're the auditor.
It would have been nice to know you were going to ask me that question. I could have documented that. My answer is, I'm sure we have plenty of money.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Next I have is an appointment of the Pleasant Township Clerk. Norm resigned back in July. I have Amy Ferris, who said she would take this position.
Oh, all right. And I'll make a motion to appoint Amy Ferris as Pleasant Township Clerk.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is item number 16, which is Hardin County Community Services Emergency Mode Operation. MICA.
Yes, this is just an updated document that they use in the mental health region. Central Iowa.
I'm not sure what services.
Thank you. Anyway, it's an updated document that they need for their region. It just basically outlines emergency operations plans if they are unable to access their data, or if there's a shortage of data. And so it involves their staff and IT departments, and we're the ones that maintain it, but they use, and it lays out a somewhat general plan on what to do should a disaster occur. So it's a document that is reviewed every year, and so every year will be renewed to you guys to approve. It has not been updated in a couple of years, so. I did not write the original document. It was done by Russell Wood up in Frankton County, and now I've inherited it.
All righty.
I'll make a motion to approve the Hardin County Community Services Emergency Mode Operation document.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is utility permits.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve Permit 8-30-17A. Motion to approve Hardin County Utility Permit Application by Midland Power Cooperative for the purpose of boring under 310th Street for new primary service to 19828-310th Street, located in Section 20 of Grant Township.
I'll second it, but I think you misread the, it's 19828.
Excuse me, 19828-310th Street.
Okay. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We have the right address.
Yep.
No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve Permit 8-30-17B. It's a motion to approve the Hardin County Utility Permit Application by Midland Power Cooperative for the purpose of boring under the road at 17437-310th Street for primary service to a new hog building located in Section 13 of Concord Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve Permit 8-30-17C. Motion to approve Hardin County Utility Permit Application by Interstate Power and Light for the purpose of replacing one pole and installing two new poles for overhead electrical lines and devices 578 feet south of 140th Street on G Avenue, as well as performing additional work on existing lines located in Sections 18, 19, 24, and 29 of Alden Township.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I get all the utility permits.
Those are the ones with the signature.
Secondary roads? Got anything for us?
Not really.
All right. Next I have is item number 18, which is approve final payment to Camline Highway Markings for project number FM CO-42865542. It's for painting our lines on the roads.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the final payment to Camline Highway Markings for project number FM CO-42865542.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Any other business? Julie?
I just want to say, today, I did a lot of form on Sunday at the Logic and Light. I really appreciate that you come and taking an interest in our
It was very informative.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Any other business? Hearing none, I can ask for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for adjournment.